Councilor Nolan, you do quorum at this time.
Thank you Deputy Clerk Crane. I want to wait just a couple of minutes because unless Ms. Peters says that others from CDD. The council member line just one or two minutes.
Yeah, we're expecting a few more from CDD.
Right, Zoom lets you know exactly who's on time by the minute. So I do think we could start the meeting. I know there's a couple other panelists who are will be joining us. But I believe it would be nice to get us started. So I will call the Neighborhood and Long Term Planning Public Facilities Arts and Celebrations Committee. The Governor's Executive Order. Constant Threat. should guideline. Been used for public comment. Channel 22 or visit the open meeting portal on the. Start by calling the role.
And Nolan. President Nolan. Pam Allen. Councilman.
Honorable.
Councilors on the van. He said with five minutes.
Somehow. It all. I want to just introduce the meeting and thank everyone for being here today to discuss life and vision. And how we can realize the importance area will soon be one of the densest areas of the city if everything continues to. Population and job opportunities. So it's critically important that we are having this discussion and thinking ahead. There's a lot more to discuss about the future of this area than we can fit into a two hour meeting. But I hope we can cover a broad base today and then continue this discussion in the future. The main questions that I previewed with the staff at CDD and some of the main players who will be talking today. To be addressed today include what progress has been made in the Alewife area since the envision was written. What are the plans to ensure the park space and envision and services necessary for densely populated area? Are provided whether it's school, library, community center, infrastructure. How are we ensuring that the Fresh Pond Apartments in Jefferson Park are connected to the surrounding green space, job opportunities and transit? And what are the concrete steps we are taking to get there? In preparing for this hearing, I met with Mike Johnson from Cambridge Housing Authority who may well be having one of his staff at the meeting. He is unable to join the hearing today, but his thoughts will be shared. Including the connectivity report that was done for Cambridge Housing Authority by the Cambridge Redevelopment Authority last year, which is publicly available on the CRA website. The importance of connectivity in the area and ensuring that the Fresh Pond Apartments in Jefferson Park, which are currently boxed in by train tracks and a parkway, are centered in this conversation. The importance of connectivity in the area and ensuring that the Fresh Pond Apartments in Jefferson Park, which are currently boxed in by train tracks and a parkway, are centered in this conversation. There's a lot to cover, but I'm excited to be talking about it and look forward to what everyone has to say. The plan for today is we'll go to CDD first. I'm grateful to that staff for making themselves available to present and answer our questions. They'll start us off with a presentation on Envision. Then we will hear from Noah Sawyer, who's Director of Real Estate at Justice Start, who is also on this Zoom right now. And then from Mike Nakagawa, who has been involved in all of the various groups related to Aleweyff development. And Fresh Pond Residents Alliance and Aleweyff and Vision. Aleweyff Study Group member Doug Brown may be able to join. He just texted me saying he's having a something of a pet crisis emergency, in which case he will send his comments to be read. Then we'll have public comment if there is any and then open it up for discussion among the counselors. So with that, I'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager Faruk.
Thank you Chair. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm joined today by Melissa Peters, our Director of Community Planning. Who also was project manager and led the Envision Cambridge process, including the Aleweyff plan work. Also from her team Drew Kane, who is now the steward of the Envision recommendations and implementation. And we're also joined by Jeff Roberts, our Director of Zoning and Development. And as you know. All the CDD team has been obviously very central to the Envision planning, the Aleweyff planning process. But also subsequent to that, working with the ordinance committee and the council on. On implementation and also on looking at evaluating zoning that has come forward subsequently. For example, with the Cabot-Cabot and Forbes petition that was. That was impacting a large section of the quadrangle area, which is the area with perhaps the largest amount of remaining development potential. In this district. And I see that we are also joined by former city assessor Bob Riordan, who is a consultant to the city and was. Very involved in the in the work related to the CCF petition. So he might have more to add as well. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa Peters, who can set the stage by reminding us it's been a couple of years since we wrapped up the Envision Aleweyff planning process. So she can just remind us of what that was all about, the vision and also some of the recommendations. So Melissa.
Thanks, Aram. And through you, Madam Chair, I will go ahead and share my screen. Bear with me. I have too many screens. Okay, is that visible to all at full screen?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, so as Aram mentioned, I'll give a brief overview of the Aleweyff district plan. Including background on the process and existing conditions really to set the frame. For the foundation for the plans, vision and recommendations. I'll then go through the key goals and recommendations of the plan. So just to remind folks, we had a significant public engagement component to this plan. We had 16 Aleweyff working group members, some of which, including Doug and Mike, are on the call today. We presented at several city committee and neighborhood groups, had four public meetings. Presented to the planning board and council, as well as had. Engagement with our community engagement team to reach more hard-to-reach communities. We had focus groups. At Fresh Pond Apartments, had street team events and really tried to meet people where they were in the area to understand their needs and desires. For the future of this district. So the planning. Dempts for the plan came out of a desire to. Recent development that was happening, particularly in the quad. As this area was changing from a commercial industrials district to more residential after the 2005 rezoning for the area. And certainly there was concern about the form that that development was taking place, as well as the traffic impacts and really doing an assessment of. What it is we hope to see there in the future. A particular concern was in the quad and the undesirable public realm. The lack of pedestrian infrastructure, disconnected street pattern. Pavement. And impervious surfaces, as well as the new development, some side yards that kind of resulted in unusable public and open space. With minimal environmental benefits. Certainly, traffic, don't need to say more there. Well-observed traffic at key peak hours. And then the recognition with the city's vulnerability. Climate vulnerability analysis that this area is subject to significant stormwater and precipitation flooding, as well as heat impacts. Largely due to the existing built environment. So we, as part of the public process, we looked at alternative futures. And kind of described different land use scenarios and what those impacts would have on both the built form, jobs, job growth. Housing, tax base, environmental and traffic impacts. And so we looked at kind of re. You know, looking at different land uses. One, the current land mix, but kind of tweaking it for improved public realm amenities. But then also looking at a more commercial and then a more industrial and a residential component to kind of see the differences in the impacts. And what we learned, heard loud and clear was this desire for retaining the legacy businesses in the area that. That Aleweyff kind of serves as a diverse job center that currently holds unique businesses that have been. Replaced other parts of the city and kind of just. Maintain a counterpoint to Kendall Square, can we offer good-paying, low-barrier-to-entry jobs in this part of the city? So looking at light industry was a primary driver for the plan's recommendations. Light industrial, unlike retail, pays well with minimal educational requirements. So you can see the four services, the light industrial areas of opportunity that our economic development folks felt. Who are growing in both Cambridge and the state, our food, beverage, medical, fabricated metal. And those pay significantly more than retail or food services without significant job training requirements. So the vision for the plan was to create a sustainable, resilient mixed-use district of focusing on connections and open space and public wealth improvements. And really creating a place where the community can come together and build social ties. So the key goals for the plan was to continue its development as a mixed-use district. Integrate it with the rest of the Aleweyff area. And really center economic opportunity. As a driver in this plan, while also balancing the challenge with creating a desirable public realm that mitigates. Impacts from climate change vulnerabilities. And so most of the work was focused on the quadrangle. And so it's, as you can see in this land use drawing, is a mix of uses. The area that we spend a lot of time with on the zoning, the resident-led zoning petition. And the Northwest Quadrangle is primarily light industrial while maintaining residential as you get to Cambridge Highlands, as well as maintaining. Those lower height limits. The shopping center, we envision as this walkable. 21st century shopping destination with residential on the top floors. Screen parking and really creating a pedestrian feel, but community there. Fresh Pond Parkway developing as residential with some mixed use along the parkway. And then Whitemore Ave. Focusing on how we can improve and incentivize open space improvements through providing additional density. For residential and some commercial development. And then certainly the Triangle, one of the major focus of the plan we did look at, since most of the sites are recently developed. We did focus on how to create more active ground floors and improve the streetscape. So how does the new plan compare with 2005 Concord Aleweyff plan? It's, they still have a mixed-use district, the big difference being that there's less residential. In the new plan, because obviously we are prioritizing light industrial and to. Achieve that light industrial, we need to incentivize that space by allowing additional commercial development. So some key zoning changes. We increased the height in the light industrial zone in the quadrangle here. To allow for more commercial space to subsidize the ground floor light industrial. We envisioned the quadrangle residential area to be. Primary, to be residential, especially as it, is it above the neighborhood and the school. The, we allow for higher ground floor elevations, so starting at. The four feet elevation to protect from future flooding. And then we looked at. Allowing greater use of TBR and density bonuses to incentivize. Infrastructure improvements and public space, including the bike path bridge connecting the quad to the triangle. So for the light industrial concept to work. We did an economic development analysis to understand the types of businesses that are growing in this area that would be. Attracted to Cambridge if they could afford the lower space, the lower rent space. And to do that, we needed to increase the height limitations in this area to subsidize the ground floor light industrial. So this went from 70 feet to 85 feet in the quad. And we wanted to allow on key streets where we're prioritizing kind of an active streetscape. That there could be retail showroom component for many of these light industrial businesses. So when we, when we say like industry, we defined it broadly to certainly focus on light industrial, which is production of small consumer goods, like food and beverage, furniture. Medical equipment. These are compatible with the mix of uses. But also, we took one step further to say, these types of spaces that require larger floor plates and higher ceilings. These are all the other types of businesses that we're trying to keep and preserve in this area, as well as attract. Are these community-focused businesses that require this space? So if we. Is other amenities that kind of provide a place for social connection. So these are things like. Central Rock Gym and other recreational centers. We kept in the plan, the incentives, as I said, for new streets, the pet and bike connection. And also a three-acre linear open space in the quadrangle, as shown on this image. And then, as I alluded to, the biggest challenge in this area was how can we create a pedestrian-friendly public realm? With the need to protect from future flooding. So how can we balance flood mitigation with goals for walkability? So in working with Department of Public Works, the Climate Resiliency Team. We determined that their recommendations was to protect, to build to and protect to the 2070 ten-year flood. And for the majority of sites in the quadrangle, that's elevating to four feet. And then any additional flood protection can happen in other ways. And then to recover from 2070 100-year flood. And this four feet, we thought was workable in that it could still allow for. An elevated sidewalk that could expand the amount of public space in the area. Here are some examples of the elevated walkways. And specifically, we created cross-sections for street types in the area. And focused our elevated walkways on Fawcett Street, Smith Place and Wilson Road. And the idea being that any curb cuts or driveway access would happen on the other roads where feasible. Additional diagrams on those cross-sections, if folks are interested. And this has been critical. Even though zoning is not adopted in this area, we've been using these as reference with developers to. Incorporate these street cross-sections into their projects so that we can create that continuous street wall and public space. Additional slides on kind of the importance of public realm and urban form changes for this area. We wanted to restrict, one of the comments we heard in public process is the long monotonous facades and how we can break those up with courtyards and forecourts to create more public space. How we can congregate open space together in the back of parcels so that it's more functional and usable. To create these built-to lines to frame the streetscape and really create an active pedestrian realm. Here are some diagrams on the kind of existing street pattern, how we could break that up into a more finer-grained network. And then ultimately look at it from a civic. Open space network of connected spaces. This again is just showing the importance of framing and articulating public space and how you can create a built edge. That has some exceptional landmark elements that can enrich and engage public life. And on this slide, I'll just point out the recommendations for incorporating canopies, awnings. Shading both from additional treat canopy as well as architectural canopies to create a more vibrant and livable public realm. And also focusing on how we can connect both the interior of space to the outside and kind of. to the outside and kind of creating that place for public life. So, we worked with Eric Thorogren, our senior urban designer, to help with the design guidelines for this area. For heat protection resilience, we increased the open space requirement to 20%. We retained the minimum permeable area at 25%. Obviously, we had suggested requiring green or white roofs, requiring high albedo roofs with parking deck segments and other surfaces, street tree planting every 20 to 30 feet, and so forth. One of the big conversations had to do with, by allowing this much development in this area, what are the impacts on traffic, particularly as it all leads out to Concord Ave? And what we did is a planning tool called Critical Sums Analysis that looks at different development scenarios and how intersections are impacted. So, we took the square foot by land use, determined how many person trips that would create, and then, what that mode share would be of how, how they would get to the area or leave the area, and then ultimately, determined what the car trips would be. We then calculated what the conflicts would be at intersections. So, based on traffic flows, how, you know, if two cars are going straight, there's no conflict. But as soon as someone makes a left turn, that's where intersections get clogged. And so, our consultant looked at that to understand where the challenges are. And with the proposed land use mix, it was determined that if we didn't do any policy or infrastructure changes for transportation, three new intersections would exceed the critical sums threshold. One at Blanchard, Fawcett, and then the Sosio Rotary. And we did that by assuming the current mode share split. So, what we needed, then we had our consultant run, what would the mode share split need to be in order to prevent those intersections from exceeding the threshold? And so, that is less than 40% for the area. And to do that, we needed to eliminate minimum parking ratios, except for residential, which we kept at 0.25 to 0.75 per dwelling unit, establishing low maximum parking ratios for the other uses, requiring all new development to have a mode share target so that we didn't exceed that district average, and then requiring new commercial building owners to provide enhanced transportation demand management. And most significant of those tools is charging market rate parking to end users. And it goes without saying that in order to encourage folks to move from the car to more sustainable modes, the access to the A.L.I.T. with the bike pedestrian bridge is critically important. Also, improving bus service and shuttles, additional planned streets and multi-use paths, as well as a recommendation to charge commercial development $5 a square foot to a transportation improvement fund specifically for the A.L.I.T. district. So, in summary, the plan, you know, create, you know, built upon the 2005 plan by creating this mixed-use district that prioritizes economic growth and economic opportunity for low-barred entry jobs, while balancing the needs for creating a resilient district that has a positive public realm and public life experience. With that, I will stop sharing and certainly open to questions and comments.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Assistant City Manager Faruk, is that from CDD? That was pretty comprehensive, just want to make sure before we move on.
Yes, that's it, Chair, for us. We're available to answer questions when the time is right.
Thank you. I think what we should do, since the next few presentations will be shorter, let's quickly go through those before we open it up because I know this group will have lots of questions, there's already many, many. And to remind people, while the focus of Ms. Peters' presentation was mostly on the quad, A.L.I.T. Envision encompasses, you know, the entire A.L.I.T. area, kind of where there used to be wetlands. So, next, if Noah Sawyer, if you wanted to talk for a few minutes.
So, thank you, thank you for inviting me, Councilor Nolan, Mayor Siddiqui, Vice Mayor Malin, and members of the council. We appreciate your time today. So, I'm here representing Justice Start, and I'm going to talk with a few hats. You know, first, you know, as a developer and implementer, you know, we are applying the recommendations of Invision A.L.I.T. to two sites in, in the A.L.I.T. area. Our Ridge Commons and 52 New Street process. And, you know, think that the, we want to first say that the plan has been great to work with. You know, it provides a great template for us to consider as we develop site-specific approaches and have found that it is a, is a good, is good guidance to help us as we attempted to build, add units and add affordable housing to, to this district, along with, with services as well. One piece I do want to sort of point out is that the Invision A.L.I.T. study area doesn't actually include some of the land that Justice Start owns. So, I appreciate that CDD did do outreach to the towers, the Fresh Pond Towers and 402 as part of the planning process, but that the Ridge Tower area and Jefferson Park were not included in the A.L.I.T. study. And so, what I'd recommend is that, you know, as we think about A.L.I.T. holistically, and we think about approaches to what I think is a very good plan that will, with specific recommendations that might affect this area, would be to find ways to engage more closely with those residents and those communities as this moves forward. Because I don't, I don't know and can't speak for them about how, how much they, they understand, how much they are included in this process and understand those pieces. You know, and want to talk a little bit as, as an owner. As you know, Justice Start owns and manages and is stewards to the 402 Ridge community. And was talking with our managers and site team about some of the questions that were raised here, particularly around access and accessibility. And, you know, it's one thing that was sort of consistent from everyone who, you know, lives and works with the communities at 402, is that the residents rely on, you know, pedestrian and bicycle access a lot already. That not only do they use, they walk to many of the services in the area, but that, you know, walking and biking is a key form of recreation and social activity for a lot of our residents. So, anything that improves safe pedestrian access, provides safe pedestrian routes for walking, I certainly know that, that our walking club would be very appreciative of anything gets added there. At the same time, you know, one of the things that, you know, our residents value the, the privacy and security that comes with being in the towers. And I think that that's something that has to be balanced. So, if there is, if there is any discussion about trying to split up these sites or think about ways to add accessibility through them, that it really does need to balance this concern about safety and privacy with the concerns around access. And so, I think those, those two pieces really do go together. You know, one, you know, as part of this, you know, we do appreciate the, the big thinking around connecting the, our, the north side of the tracks with the rest of the A.L.I.T. area. And, you know, I think that there might be some creative solutions that won't necessarily have a huge effect on, on, on housing and other development plans in the area. One piece I just would like to add to the council's agenda is really to, along with sort of big thinking about creative options, is really maybe some creative thinking about how the existing resources might be better used. You know, we spent a lot of time thinking about this being located right next to A.L.I.T. Parkway, but the existing bridge and overpass are, is not especially inviting or welcoming to our residents. Right, you know, right now, they, there are complaints about having to walk over it and conditions on the bridge. You know, the current plan with DCR is that, that biking occurs in A.L.I.T. Parkway, which I think many of us would choose not to do. And that, you know, there's also a pedestrian ramp and access that exists on DCR land next to our 402 Ridge site that's sort of poorly designed and underutilized. So, there's existing infrastructure that, making the best of that and making the best use of that, I think, would make huge steps forward in connectivity and, and accessibility that could probably, in some cases, happen sooner. And, you know, with, with, with smaller changes and some of the big pieces approached. So, I appreciate the big thinking, but also want to encourage a little bit of maybe smaller incremental thinking to go as well. And that's, that's all I have to add, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, that was good. And the reason we included you in this is if you, all of you in the A.L.I.T. Envision, it includes both sides of A.L.I.T. Parkway, but kind of with a cutout for that apartment, which, and yet, it's part of the same geography, it's part of the same ecosystem. So, that's why it seems to make sense to include it because certainly, the A.L.I.T. plan is noted by Ms. Peters, includes all of A.L.I.T., Jerry's Pond, IQ HQ, as well as the shopping center on the other side. So, now, I think that Mike Nakagawa has a few slides to share in just a few minutes, and then, we'll wrap up. Mike, you're on mute.
Couldn't find the thing to unmute. Okay, sorry, can you hear me now, and can you see it? Hi, I'm Mike Nakagawa, I'm on the leadership teams of the A.L.I.T. Study Group, Fresh Pond Residents Alliance, and A.L.I.T. Neighbors Inc., as well as have been on city's climate change plan, or resiliency planning. I have a few slides with only a few points each, so this will move quickly. But this picture shows how, and I appreciate the previous, was it Noah? Because that's a great lead-in to what I wanted to talk about. This picture shows how the commuter rail tracks separate North A.L.I.T. with the red line, the Minuteman Trail, Russell Field, and the highest concentration of affordable housing in the city, and South A.L.I.T., which has Danny Park, jobs in the quadrangle, and retail at and across Fresh Pond Mall. But there are only three crossing points in this area. Let's get to the next slide. So, there are definite connectivity problems. There's no good access to A.L.I.T. Station, Minuteman Trail, Russell Field from the south by bike. There's no safe access to the mall or Danny Park from the north without a car. There's little access to jobs without a car. The entrance at Fresh Pond Mall is dangerous by foot or by bike. And there's been a proposed bridge between Ridge Towers and the mall, but that has been opposed by the private property owner in the past. So, this is an overview picture from the Cambridge Res. Redevelopment Authority's draft report from October of last year. And one of their first priorities is a multi-use path along the north side of the tracks. However, it is a path to nowhere. It doesn't connect to the parkway bridge. It doesn't get to a destination better than what exists now. So, if we were to add an underpass connecting Jefferson Park to Danny Park, that would provide safe access for kids and others from Ridge Towers, Jefferson, to Danny Park and the mall. It would also allow access to A.L.I.T. Station, Russell Field, the Minuteman Trail from the south by bike without having to go on the parkway. And underpasses are much easier for cyclists than bridges, which is why I'm suggesting that, that be the method. So, this would be safe access for kids by bike to the sports fields at Russell and Russell Field and Danny. But kid safety is one of my big concerns. And this also helps out with access to schools. The access to Peabody School from Ridge Towers and Jefferson Park is a long way down Ridge, shown in the magenta line. And biking is the key way for athletes to get to the high school without worrying about being late because of the frequent transit or traffic delays. But Ridge Avenue and Sherman Street are very dangerous for youth cyclists. Adding an underpass reduces travel along dangerous roads by cutting through Danny Park to get to the Toban School with only one block of street, or getting to Garden Street, which is a later connection. And then, a commuter rail station completes the picture because it would come with a way to get across the tracks, allowing access to jobs in the red line and the Minuteman Trail, as well as from the commuter rail. And the commuter rail gives access to suburban jobs without a car for the residents in the area. Residents of the quadrangle can also access the red line and Minuteman Trail. And to reach the jobs in the quadrangle, there'd be less need for cars taking what the 2019 governor's report said was the most, second-most congested roadway in the state at 14 hours of congestion per day. I asked Ken Johnson to look at population, housing, and employment data on the commuter rail station to compare that with an analysis that was done in 2015 for a commuter rail stop. And I asked for data using both half-mile and 1 kilometer, which I've seen used lately from this proposed station, that are considered to be walking distance. And the circles here are those distances with the larger being the 1 kilometer boundary. And I won't go into the details, but population, housing, and jobs generally far exceed the standards for other communities when you're looking at A.L.I.T. And then, making compelling case for having one here with more development still to come. Putting an underpass and commuter rail station in one project would correct a lot of the issues we have in this long-neglected part of the town. And this is the time to act with Jefferson Park because it's currently being redesigned with draft plans almost ready for permits. We need to make sure the plans don't preclude an underpass. So, that's the end of what I wanted to present.
Thank you so much. I love that chart of the, I think we could include it. I'm sure CDD has seen it, but I hadn't seen it before about the circle with the number of jobs quite nearby, and I'm sure Noah has seen it as well. Doug Brown to leave in a few minutes. I will call on next to round out that presentation, and then, we'll move into the next stage. Doug?
Can you hear me, Patty?
Yes.
Great, thanks for having me. Was, been, it's been a long road, going way, way back with the formation of this working group and, and their efforts. I think I had two big takeaways from the process. And I would encourage the council to pursue, and the city to pursue these two efforts. And the first is, I think it's very important now that we have a document, a plan, and a set of urban design guidelines that go with it, that we actually update the zoning. That was always assumed to be a part of this effort, is that the zoning at A.L.I.T. would actually be updated to reflect the working group's efforts. And I would beg the council to actually pursue some attempt at holistic zoning for this area because what we're facing right now is to continued onslaught of individual zoning proposals by individual owners and developers. And it's just not in the city's best interest to pursue things on a piecemeal basis. The second one is I would encourage the, everyone involved to look for the easy wins. And I think a lot of the easy wins are actually in the area of connectivity. As Mike's already mentioned, you know, an underpass. And I would only point out that historically, there actually was an underpass at that location that was used by the Brickyard. And I would also encourage us to think about how we want to use the Route 2 Bridge. I previously mentioned to Patty that that Route 2 Bridge is actually proposed to be redeveloped and rebuilt in 2025 under Mass DOT's latest long-term plan. So, we should think about what that looks like from a pedestrian standpoint. I think there's some other easy wins. One that's been discussed repeatedly is, is around Terminal Road and how it can enable connectivity on the other side of the tracks in the same way that, that an underpass could on the north side. I think without a doubt, regardless of what happens on Mooney Street, I think we do need to think seriously about rebuilding Smith Place in the same way that we rebuild New Street because it's just not a tenable situation. It literally has no sidewalks in some sections, and it's subject to a lot of heavy truck traffic, and it actually has a lot of pedestrian use. So, I think in the short term, we have to figure out a plan for how we're going to make that better because anything that happens on Mooney Street goes through Smith Place. I think there's some places where, you know, we've already put effort. So, Sal, you know, behind the Stop and Shop, I mean, sorry, behind the Whole Foods, we already own the railroad right away, and we've already set aside hundreds of thousands of dollars under the CPA to design a path there. And so, I would ask that we, we complete that design so that in the future, that project is shovel-ready. That would obviously connect to any sort of underpass. That would obviously connect to any sort of underpass, and it also brings the Greenway to North Cambridge in some ways. I think the the other one that has to be discussed, because it's been being discussed since at least 1989, and Mike alluded to the idea of a rail stop. And, you know, at at Fenway, the state paid for a rail stop, and that's for a an immediate neighborhood population of about 900 people. So I don't think it's it's beyond us to come up with a solution to crack that issue. And in fact, it's written into our municipal ordinances in the Vehicle Trip Reduction Ordinance that actually asked for our plan for a rail stop there. That was in 1992. And then the final piece is, you know, we had a lot of discussions this spring about bridges and where they should be. I would only point out that we do own a number of, we do own a number of easements, right-of-ways, and pieces of land throughout this district. And we have negotiated, at last count, $1.7 million in contributions from developers for the design of a bridge. So I, as a as a task force member, would ask, what are we doing with that money? Have we spent it? And if so, what have we got to show for it? Because I think one of the things that all of this starts with is some sort of completed design for how we're going to get across the tracks. So again, just to reiterate, we, I think we need to update the zoning. And I think we need to pursue any and every connectivity project that we can. Because I think we need to lay down a network of paths and roads prior to the build-out that's forecast for 2030. Those are my primary concerns, and I'm looking forward to hearing more from the rest of the panelists.
Thank you, Doug Brown. That, and part, what we're focusing on, by focusing on the zoning and the public spaces, we can't totally control what a developer will build. But what we can control is the zoning throughout this entire area and then making any kind of decisions around the public spaces and the connectivity. There are three people signed up for public comments, so I think we'll go to those next. And then I'll go to Councilor Carlon, Councilor McGovern, and the Vice Mayor for comments. So I don't know if the clerk or. Anne Stewart, you have the floor.
Hi, I live on Wheeler Street, and I feel like some of the other people in this area, we're in the heart of the beast. I submitted this comment along with Aunt Tennis, who's the Highlands Neighborhood Association, you know, nominal head, because she couldn't be here today. And I just wanted to point out that a few months ago, our Neighborhood Association was one of several signers of a letter to you asking you to postpone active development proposals until the vision report was addressed and approved, to commit to an implementation plan, and after approval, to hire a firm to write the zoning guidelines for each part of the city. So I appreciate that these items are being emphasized today. And since then, we've learned that there's a lot more development in the pipeline. And that's only, you know, the last couple of months. And we don't know how many of these are public. But we would like to thank Vice Mayor Mallon and Councilor Nolan for co-sponsoring our neighborhood-initiated policy order, asking the city to work with the state and the state police to develop a plan to proactively manage the massive amount of traffic congestion from these projects that will probably extend way beyond 2025. And we're grateful to the council for passing the order. But as others have pointed out, with no implementation plan and no zoning guidelines, we're stuck in a time warp and individuals, individual developers control the future. So to keep this short, we thought about three, what we think of as no-brainer infrastructure improvements, primarily on our side, quote-unquote, of the Parkway. One is, I've heard many comments about the city wanting to get people out of cars. And it's clear that it's time, way past time to initiate conversations with the MBTA about an Alewife commuter rail stop. And two, the most amount of development in the Highlands Quad area is next to Fresh Pond Parkway. On Wheeler Street and back of the Eversource substation, there's 525 luxury rental units with 20% affordable housing ready very soon. And we really need a terminal road connection with sidewalks for sharing with bicycles and pedestrians. Would be nice to change the intersection, I believe, at Fresh Pond Parkway and Terminal Road so that it would take some pressure off the rotaries there. And again, to emphasize the, or reemphasize the need for a bridge, the latest dream for one of the far northwest corner was solely for a developer's benefit. But the area that really needs a bridge or some simple inexpensive walkway is over the tracks to make the Ridge Avenue side of the Parkway available to Danny Park, the city's new accessible playground, shopping mall, and of course, the school. Thank you for for this meeting, and thank you for devoting serious consideration to the infrastructure in this area. Thank you.
The next speaker is James Williamson. Mr. Williamson, you have the floor.
James does not appear to have joined the Zoom.
The next speaker is John Chun.
Hold on one second. Sorry, Paula. It looks like he may be in as a different name. One second.
Can you?
James, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. My name is James. Here we go again. My name is James Williamson, 1000 Jackson Place, Jefferson Park. I'm actually a person who lives in Jefferson Park. And I'm kind of tired of being ignored. I've lived here for 14 years. When I first moved here, there was no tenant council. I set about initiating the process, very onerous, with lots of obstacles from the Housing Authority to try to organize a tenant council. I hope that someone else would be interested in 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 sharing it. I ended up being president of the tenant council kind of by default. I think I know a little bit about this area and about this neighborhood. And I have been ignored. I put a tremendous amount of time and effort into understanding what goes on here and into advocating for things that seemed important, that might matter, and have been ignored for the 14 years that I've lived here by virtually everybody, including city councillors, to whom I have taken the trouble of writing extensive comments with ideas and suggestions. So I'm going to talk about some of those things that have been ignored. One is about transit. For over 10 years, the 80, the only bus that serves this area is the 83 bus. The 83 bus cannot make it really around the rotary in the in the in the layover area where it turns around next to the baseball field. It, the drivers get stuck. They try to go over the curb, and they get stuck in the mud, and tow trucks have to come and get them out. Somebody, without any communication with people like myself, who've been involved in advocating around this for years, decided to put fake boulders in the rotary. That was not really a solution to the problem of a tight turning radius. Another issue there is the bus goes over a raised sidewalk. And when, and then on the Ridge Ave side, there's a, there's a divot. Cars drag their undercarriage on that raised sidewalk. The bus has nearly been tipping over, literally nearly tipping over for years. I have brought this up for years at the Cambridge Transit Advisory Committee and been ignored for years. I also advocated for restoring the the time, the duration of the opening of the DCR-owned and managed pool. When I first moved here, it was open through Labor Day weekend. A year or a year after I first moved here, I was noticed how silent it was on Labor Day weekend. And it was shut down. There's much more to say. I don't get paid $187,000 to represent people from the House who live in Jefferson Park, but I would like to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is John Chun. Mr. Chun, you have the floor.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and the members of the committee. My name is John Chun from 48 Loomis Street. I submitted an email this morning regarding the Envision Plan and how I like seeing that to convert into zoning. And I did enjoy seeing Ms. Peters' presentation just now. And as much as I understand about the Envision Plan and specifically the Alewife District Plan, there are very good elements that I like to see being enforced by zoning by the city. One example I'd like to give you is there was a recent development proposal by CCNF to develop and build buildings all along Mooney Street. And they picked up some elements of from the Alewife District Plan. But as they were, they were doing it, they cherry picked what would give them advantage while they were hiding things they 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 did not want to share. Specifically around that street cross-section that Ms. Peters presented, they did not want to build that Mooney Street as wide as what was called for by the by the Alewife District Plan. So with the current situation, I believe that developers might come and pick and choose what they want to see from the the plan. And they may not adhere to the rest of the plan. But I do believe that the plan really needs to be in place as a whole and not as a piecemeal. Because I think the plan really is a good plan, only if it's really implemented as a whole in the entire quadrangle and the triangle. So that is a request that I have is to start the process of reviewing and adopting the plan and then turning that into the zoning. And I also like to speak on behalf of my two daughters who submitted an email this morning about their request to build a railroad pedestrian crossing, connecting the Ridge Towers and the Alewife, the Fresh Pond Shopping Mall. So I did hear from today's discussions that there were many proposals about underpass as well as other connectivity. And my daughters really would like to see that crosswalk there so that they can go between Danny Park area and over to the Russell Fields area. So there are, there are a lot of sports facilities on both sides of the railroad tracks. And now the railroad tracks are really acting as a barrier for kids to move back and forth. So that is something that we'd like to ask you to consider. And I, we do believe that the railroad crossing would be a very cost-effective solution as long as we do get a buy-in from the MBTA. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chun, there was a, Lee Ferris has her hand up. Does that mean you would like to speak, Ms. Ferris? Or if we could enable her, if she doesn't, she can decline.
Yes, Lee, you're an able.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Nolan, there are two more public speakers to sign up.
I believe they're calling, they're already panelists. Is it Mr. Nakagawa and Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Excuse me. Are we going to close public comment now, councillor?
After, after Lee Ferris.
Okay.
Thanks. I did try to sign up, but for some reason, the forum wouldn't let me. My, I just have a few brief comments. Thanks for the presentations and by everybody in the comments by prior speakers. I'm wondering if the councillors could ask the CDD staff why the city has not prepared zoning for Alewife. Because as Mike Brown said, CDD had said at the beginning of the envision process that that would happen after we finished coming up with a plan for Alewife. And in fact, I think there's similar implementation problems for all of Envision. So I know it's a lot of work to create a draft zoning, but are there other reasons, other impediments? If so, it would would be good to know. I also think that in this process, it would be good if there would be a list and a map of all the current development proposals so that they could be compared, what they're proposing to do could be compared with Envision. And I strongly agree that we do need actual zoning. Otherwise, developers will continue picking and choosing which elements of Envision they want to follow. And lastly, here's my sort of blue sky idea. It looks like we're going to be getting $25, $25 million back from the T for the Green Line. Couldn't we take that $25 million and turn around and build the bridge at Alewife that we want with that money? So I know it's blue sky, but I really think we need to just pay for that bridge, put it in a bond if we need to do whatever we need to do, pay for it, and get started on it. Because I think as long as we expect developers to provide that for free for us, then that's going to mean that they feel free to pick and choose which which elements of the Envision Plan they want. So for example, the CCF proposal did not at all follow the light industrial that was described by Ms. Peterson. So let's do what we need to do as a city government to get what we want, the green spaces, the parks, the bridges, et cetera, and then have developers operate within clear zoning that we have designed and passed. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, move to drive a motion to close public comment.
So much.
On closing public comment, councillor Nolan?
Yes, yes.
Councillor Carlon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mallon?
Yes.
Councillor McGovern?
Yes.
Councillor Zandervan?
Yes.
And public comment is closed on the affirmative vote with five in favor.
Thank you, and thank you to all the presenters as well as the speakers. I now opened up, I have a councillor Carlon and councillor McGovern next on the list for either questions of anyone on the panel or comments or whatever related to to the topic at hand. Thank you, councillor Carlon.
Madam Chair, so our initial comments are both questions and comments?
I think, given that it's three o'clock, so we're halfway through the meeting, I, I think you can either do questions or comments because I'm not sure how much longer we'll get around.
I noticed in the mapping, and one might have come after the other, that the CCNF site that we all have discussed quite a bit had two different codes on it. One purple, one yellow, yellow for housing, purple for industry. And which is it? Or it's both? It was classified as two different uses predominantly.
Yeah, I believe it was initially classified in one way, but it has since subsequently changed. Perhaps Assistant City Manager Farouk or her team might be able to comment on that.
Through through your chair, I'm going to ask Melissa to to comment on on that. But these, just keep in mind that this work that Melissa presented dates back to when the Envision Plan was completed and has not been updated then for new ownership, et cetera. So some of this is based on pre-existing ownership and maps to the zoning districts. I'm going to turn it over to Melissa to say more.
Thanks through through you, Madam Chair. The the map that I showed was a land use map that showed the predominant or likely or desirable land use for that area. So it shows that the northwest part of the quad was primarily the light industrial zoning district, but that it would allow residential near the Highlands, which was preferential from the community perspective. So it's, the zoning district is different from the land use map, but that, if that makes sense.
I, I understand. One was the zoning district, the other is preference. That's good. On, you mentioned Ms. Peters' mode share, and you said less than 40%. 40% of what? Commercial?
Through you, Madam Chair, 40% auto car, car trips from development. from development.
I got it, I got it. So that has to be highly reviewed by the planning board and staff on each project.
Yeah, primarily through parking requirements as well as the T.D.M. review.
Okay, I, I know Mr. Reardon's here and I know the reasons why we want, the managers, administration want a high percentage of commercial development. But I think you will find the vast majority of people on this call will want dominant residential development. And that all we hear is we need more residential. And I think this is going to be a big issue for the rest of my lifetime in Cambridge. And I won't expect a response now, but on connections, I agree, they're critical. Everybody has said that. So how will you prioritize a very large block when only a portion of the block is being developed at one time? Which is my way of saying, we have to show where those connections should be inside of a large block. How, how will that be done? If we don't say it, how will it be done? How do the two pieces connect?
Through the chair. I, I'm, I don't know if Melissa understood that question a little bit, but I'm, I'm struggling a little bit.
What I'm saying, your, your blocks are super blocks. They appear to be, I'm guessing, five hundred by eight hundred or something like that in size, which is office blocks, light industrial blocks. And yet you show these secondary roads and pedestrian paths in between. But if we don't show, look at property lines and don't show where it should be, you'll never have the two connecting. So how do we do that if you're only dealing with a part of a block at a time?
I, I get it. Thank, thank you through you, Chair. Thank you for clarifying that, Counselor. Yes, completely agree that the ultimate urban fabric that we want to see in this area is not one that appears like super blocks. However, given that one of the priorities, and I think this goes to your prior question or comment, was one of the priorities that really emerged through this process was a desire to see light industrial in this area. And principally to, to help with economic empowerment and help provide good jobs that have low barrier to entry. And that provide possibility of people finding footholds to then, you know, progress economically and, and not just remain at, like often retail jobs will do is that once you are in there, you kind of stay at a very low salary. There's not really a growth path there. So that emerged through this process as a pretty strong priority. Melissa can certainly say more about that, but that's what resulted in some of the, the larger footprints that you would see on the plan. However, we completely agree with you that from a planning perspective, you don't want blocks to be super blocks and have permeability to the extent possible. And so that's why you see the urban design plan the, the way that it looks. Now to the point of how would we make that happen if only part of the block is, is being developed? Which is that, you know, none, none of those intermediate block connections are prescriptive, that they must be at that exact place, but they are conceptual that we would want to see those happen. And we've had this sort of situation in, in fact, even in the L.Y.F. area in the past, on the eastern part of the quadrangle. And you might not, you know, even if it's a smaller building that is being built or part of a block that's being redeveloped, we have certainly off through the special permit process asked developers to maintain or, or build in connections or retain space for connections. This has happened on on Fawcett Street. It's happened on, even on New Street for pedestrian connection and Fawcett Street for the intermediate connection east-west. So there, there is a lot of precedent for doing that through the process. And also say that the zoning, that even the existing zoning creates an incentive to make that happen. So there, there is in fact bonus G.F.A. that somebody would get if they build in the intermediate desired connections as referenced in the plan. So that means that people in fact have a, there's an incentive for them to do what the plan asks them to. And it's easier for the planning board than to require that through the special permit conditions. And I don't know if Melissa or even Jeff might want to add more on, on that topic.
Let me jump in, I know we don't have much time. Open space. I know you all know that the amount of pedestrians around Fresh Pond is measured every day. And the max is fifteen hundred and we're close to that on days. For that reason and all the normal city life reasons, plus canopy, plus flooding, I feel the plan is very deficient in open space. Now, I've heard through three, excuse me, two different landowners, commercial landowners, that the city proposed open space is for sale and has been for over two months. The city has not moved on this. How can we be confident that that is going to happen, that purchase? Your whole project is based on that spine working as an urban design element. We know the city is low, it's less than half of the average city. This neighborhood community will be less than half of that, much less. It's about a third of what our average city is. When are we going to move on this? I, 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 I'm just stunned, to be honest. And when I heard that this is the case, I began to move, think that we do not have an implementation process going on that counts. So I would encourage you and tell us who we should speak to. And I will speak to the manager, as will my colleagues, that I, I think what you propose, and I get why, we're pro-development, is absolutely not sufficient. And Fresh Pond is not going to balance it, given that it's primarily pedestrians walking the length. I, I think that is absolutely key. And lastly, just bear with me. Well, I'll stop, I'll stop the, oh, access. We know this is miserable from a car point of view. And even forty percent of new development being car oriented, I don't believe it can work. I honestly don't. And I, I would love to see a traffic study that says it would without major changes, including a shuttle from A.L.Y.F., which hasn't been mentioned at all, other than the word shuttle. We need two bridges. Oh, I know what I wanted to say. The bridge at the future commuter station will not happen until there's a commuter station. The M.B.T. owns it. They're not going to participate until they know that it works with what they want to propose. And they will not move forward. I've worked with the M.B.T.A. on two different sites and I can tell you right now, they're light years behind and understaffed. So the real, and nobody wants the bridge on Smith Street if there's only one. I get that. That will be the first bridge, if there's a bridge ever. And we need a bridge immediately. Thank you for your work. And I really appreciate the whole discussion. I thought all the comments, public and private, were very positive and very realistic. One last thing, on zoning, you better test the zoning before you do the zoning. And that's through urban design, site by site, block by block, as you've drawn it. Thank you.
Counselor Carlon, it sounds like you weren't, you were laying out kind of questions and, and wishes and requests as opposed to waiting for a specific response, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
And I'm sure the city is.
We don't have time for that.
Yeah, well, yes, they'll just get back to us on how to buy all the land, do the traffic study and complete the bridge and have zoning throughout, right? Great. Next up, Counselor McGovern, I believe.
Madam Chair, could I just respond quickly to a couple of his points based on the envision A.L.Y.F. working group? One about the residential area in the northwest corner of the quad. That is an isolated place that takes away from light industrial use and was not part of the original discussions and just showed up initially the day Captain Forbes presented at the planning board. Throughout the discussions, I think the whole area was deemed to be light industrial. And I want to make sure that we don't shortchange light industrial and use the definition that's in the, the plan, not things like brew pubs, which are suggested by Captain Forbes, which are essentially food service. So that's important for us in terms of residential. There've been four thousand new units of housing developed in the area or permitted or coming onboard since 2010 within a half mile of A.L.Y.F. station. So there's a lot of residential going on, but we're not getting any of the support for the residents going onwards. I think that should be addressed. And limiting development by light industrial use was limiting property values. So owners could afford it, but that was now shifted by making these other allowances. So it's going to be hard for a straight light, light industrial owner to afford the property. That's what I was going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Nakagawa. Counselor McGovern and then Counselors Zandervan and Vice Mayor Mallon.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Thank you to everyone for their work on this, both from the community as, as well as staff. I completely agree with the need for the rail station. You know, we're going to need multiple bridges as, as people have talked about, certainly one from Fresh Pond Apartments as well as on the other side of the highway. You know, I, I would say to the city that I know all things being equal, we would love it if someone else paid for these bridges. But what are we going on, twenty plus years that we've been waiting for that to happen? So at some point, I don't know how much longer we need to wait. If we're really serious, we keep hearing that the city wants this, the city wants this, the city wants this. Well, the city should pay for it if we want it that bad. And let's bond it out and use our triple A. bond rating to our advantage. You know, enough waiting, even, even with all the development that's happened there, what, we, what, what was the figure? One point seven million? I mean, long way to go, you know, at that rate to get a couple of bridges. So we really need to step up on that as soon as possible. In terms of the, you know, I, I completely agree that, that we need to move forward with making some zoning changes and clarifying some things. I do caution folks a little bit because we have, we have zoning throughout the city and that doesn't stop developers from coming in and filing petitions to ask for more. And whatever zoning we pass, I will guarantee you that a developer is going to come in and file. It's not going to do away with individual petitions being filed. I will guarantee you a developer will come in and say, oh, this is the current zoning, but I want to go a little bit higher. I want to go a little bit denser and this is what I'll give you. So let's, you know, that's not going away, I, I, I don't think. Developers will always try to improve their situation and no matter what we do, we're going to get individual one offs and we're going to have to deal with those. I'm really glad to see the focus on light industrial. I think that is really important. But I do want to, I want to ask about the, on the retail side. And I know there was a slide that talked about a shopping center. That can be a, a lot of different things. That could be an outlet mall like Assembly Row that has housing above it. Or it could be just a quarter of a mile down the road. You've got Station Landing that has residential above it and it has a dry cleaner and a pizza place and a drugstore and a convenience store. You know, if we're thinking of on the retail end, I would much rather be more of a Station Landing model. You know, we want to talk about traffic. Well, you know what, if people don't have to jump in their cars to go buy a gallon of milk, you're going to cut down on traffic. And so, you know, I'd like to, I don't know if there's been more thought sort of given to that. So I, I appreciate the light industrial, but as we're building more residential, we also need conveniences for people who live there to be able to get their business done without jumping in cars. You know, and then the other part is we can build a lot of things and we can zone for a lot of things, but that doesn't mean people are going to come. So is there, is there talk with the Economic Development Department or others about, you know, how do we actually get businesses? You know, we, we can, we can zone for a convenience store to, I'm not opening one. That doesn't mean, you know, someone's going to come there and, and do it. So do we have any plan in terms of how are we going to attract businesses to this location? Or do we feel like it's just going to happen because we're Cambridge and people want to do business here?
Through the chair, Melissa, jump in if there's more that you need to, to add on this. But absolutely, the economic development team was very much part of working on, on this particular plan. And they did feel like light industrial was, you know, and as well as our consultants, that light industrial while challenging, we would be able to, if we had enough critical mass, we would be able to draw folks. The neighborhood serving retail that you're talking about, Counselor, is actually a lot more challenging. And that's why the plan actually talks about aligning that along the main streets rather than further in the back so that it's not just serving the residents here, but also folks who might be commuting through. So the retail tends to be, and I, I once, one of our Cambridge retailers, longstanding, well-respected, the previous owner of Tags used to say that retail is the, the most delicate flower in the garden. And it's in fact true because it, retail always will follow the population and it needs people to support it. There's, unlike other businesses, the, the margins are so narrow for the most part that it's really hard to get retail unless a retailer feels that they, they have enough of a, a market, whether it be right in the location, if they're neighborhood serving, or if there's a way for people to get there. So I think the, that's why we felt that the most likely, and this is working with our economic development staff, working with the experience in the, the city amongst our community planning staff around this and, and the, the development community in this area to, to think through where that would be most likely to be successful would be along either Concord Ave or some of the main northwest, I mean, north-south spines like Smith Place, where you're likely to see the most amount of people. Even though we would love to see it along the east-west corridor that's more internal, but it feels like it's going to, in the present scenario, it's going to be hard to achieve. But we did feel like there, when you have enough people, which we're starting to see critical mass there, that we're, we would be able to attract some amount of neighborhood serving retail.
Thank you. And it's, you know, I know it's hard, but it's part of the reason we are sort of in this situation. Because as new developments happened and, and residential was built, developers said, well, there's not enough people here. We can't do that. And then the next project comes and says, well, there's not enough people here, we can't do. We're starting to get to the point where we got to think, you know, broader than that because there are going to be enough people there and it is growing. And, and, you know, it's, it's, I think it's just vitally important for, to create that sense of community and neighborhood as, as well as convenience for people. I didn't see this in the slides and I'm sorry if, if I missed it. What is the, is there any talk of, maybe this gets to Counselor Carlon's point about the city buying some property, but what is the, what is the thought around some city functions like a fire station, a library or school? We heard that a lot with the C.C.N.F. We heard that a lot with the CCNF conversation that, you know, we needed some of those amenities there. I'm not, I'm a little mixed on the school, but I certainly think the fire station is vital because trying to get, even with sirens, trying to get there from here on Ave is, I don't know how you do it at Rush Hour. So is that in this plan at all or did I miss it or?
Melissa, do you want to talk about what's in the plan and then I can add in anything else that's needed?
Sure, through you, Madam Chair. We, we didn't preclude the citing of public facilities, but we also didn't identify locations for them. Partly concern around showing it on a particular property owner's site. But certainly if there is a need for public facility, that's an opportunity for city investment and we defer to the council and the manager's office on that.
And that's something, I mean, if you think in terms of a fire station, and I'm not talking about, you know, some massive, you know, building, you put two trucks out there that can hold things down, you know, while others come. I mean, it's just, but again, that we can't force a private owner to build a fire station, which is why we need to accumulate property if that is available so that we have control over what goes there. Lastly, through you, Madam Chair, and I'm sure we'll get to this, but, you know, and we've heard a couple, I think Mr. Brown said this. You know, the $6 trillion question is now, what? Is CDD going to be drafting zoning for us to discuss and move forward? You know, we certainly have a lot of great ideas and there's been a lot of work done. How do we, how do we make that a reality and make this happen?
Through you, Chair. Two thoughts with regards to that question, Councillor. And I think this conversation is helpful because I have to say that in prior conversations, we have not felt a clear sense of whether we have the council's endorsement on this plan or not. And I think zoning is in some ways incredibly hard because it's so detailed, particularly for something as complex as an area study. But at the same time, in some ways, the easiest part is to write the zoning. The much harder part is to know what it is that you are trying to make happen through the zoning. So we would want to make sure that this plan actually has the blessing of the city council before we start to embark on a large task like translating the plan into zoning. We are ready to do that, but we also would want to know that that is in fact a priority for the, for the council. Because it is going to take up a lot of the zoning and development staff's time in terms of what they are able to pay attention, you know, to really focus on in terms of the zoning tasks that the council would like us to focus on. So we are, if it's the council's will that this be the top priority, we are absolutely ready to pivot to it.
Through you, Madam Chair. I wouldn't, you know, obviously I'm not going to speak for the council. We can't even begin to discuss the zoning and ordinance until you write it. So I think, you know, getting something in front of us, nothing comes out the same way it goes in usually. And so I think there's a great starting point here. There's been a lot of work here. It's now time to take it to that next step to get some zoning done and written so that we can go to ordinance. We can have public hearings. We can talk about it. We can amend it as, as we see fit and move it forward. I would say again, and we talked about this during the budget season, you have a ton on your plate. You know, we file a lot of petitions for you to consider. Citizens file a lot of petitions for you to consider. You know, if you, if you need to contract out some help or do something like that, then please ask for it and I think we would support it. I think, I think it's, you know, I don't want to make it more difficult on you, but I think it's also, at least speaking for myself, it's a little hard because there are so many priorities, right? And it's hard to say, well, you know, this is more important than building on. I mean, we're still waiting six years on the plan to build on city-owned parking lots in Central Square. You know, so there are so many competing priorities. They are all important and they all have to, you know, have some progress made on them. So if you need additional help, I would certainly be one to support that. But I think, you know, we need to move this stuff forward and get this conversation to the next step. That would be my, my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McGovern. And to just quickly clarify that, it sounds like Assistant City Manager Faruk, you would want the council to ask you to write the zoning. To be clear, it's a priority because Councilor McGovern said very clearly it is a priority and yet, and you said you haven't quite heard that, but you're hearing it much more strongly today. And then he said, well, just write the zoning. But if you, if you give us guidance on what you would need, because it sounds like, and I don't, I don't mean to just go in front of Councilors Zandervan and Vice Mayor, but.
Thank you, Chair. No, we certainly are hearing that today. I think I, one thing that would be helpful is to know that this plan, that the council feels like this is a good starting point at least because it will take a lot of work to translate that, this into zoning. But if you think that this is a really bad idea or some basic concept here doesn't make sense. For instance, like, you know, the question of should light industrial be here at all? Or should this all be prioritizing housing? That is a very foundational question. And it would be good to know that we have generally the support of council in terms of going the way of the light industrial before Jeff and his team spent, you know, weeks, weeks putting that together into zoning. So that's the sort of, you know, just if basically this plan looks like a good starting point, we are, we can, we can prioritize that.
Thank you. And I, Councilor Zandervan and then Vice Mayor Allen still have yet to speak. Councilor Zandervan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Thanks to the staff for this presentation. I apologize if I'm a little slow today. I got my second vaccine shot yesterday, so. Why didn't you do that?
We're glad you got it.
Well, thank you. I do find it a little bit frustrating, you know, I think the, the plan is certainly well-intentioned and I, I love the idea that we would have light industrial, you know, companies or ideally even co-ops in this location, creating sustainable jobs for people. But as with pretty much every aspect of this plan, I don't understand how we make that happen. Because even if you write the zoning, you're still at best providing incentives, but you can't require that it be this or that. So I just, I really have a hard time wrapping my head around, like, how do we actually get what we want? You know, like, we all agree that we want a commuter train station there, but nobody seems to be able to tell me how do we actually get. We want a bridge and an underpass, but we just can't seem to get there. And, you know, the one obvious tool that we, that we have, that we are apparently refusing to use is that we as a city built this stuff. But, but that doesn't seem to be an option here. So I just find it frustrating. I don't really know what to tell you. Like, if it's a good plan, you should spend time writing the zoning. I don't know because I don't understand how that zoning written down would lead to the outcome that we want.
Through you, Chair. I'll try to address that super quickly, which is that zoning is not an ideal tool to develop infrastructure. It's, you know, we, we have found a way to try to make that happen and it does, but it's a very, very slow tool for that process. So you are seeing certain pieces happen, but it will, it will, if that's the only tool we rely on, it will take time to manifest itself. So I have to admit that, even though I wish I could say that it would be faster. The, in terms of the land uses, that is something that zoning does influence or can influence more strongly. You still can't, you're exactly right, Councillors Zandervan. You absolutely cannot require something because if somebody's not going to redevelop their site, they're not going to, we're not going to get the outcome we want. And even if they do, if three different things are permitted, they might choose something that is allowed at a lower density if they feel like that's the right, if that's their mission or if that's a more profitable thing. So what we are always trying to do when framing the zoning is to try to create, tilt the incentives in such a way that they're in favor of the outcome that we desire the most. So that's really the, I think, the extent to which zoning can go. Because really limiting, I mean, we've actually worked the reverse in Cambridge to try to broaden zoning from where it used to be, just one thing was required. Because that is also not a good, good way because you often find much more unintended negatives from that approach. So, so it is, it is a planning tool, but it's only, only one tool and it's, it does rely completely on private development to manifest the end results.
Thank you. So, I mean, you know, the only conclusion that I can draw is that we're using the wrong tools. And that if we, if we're truly committed to getting what we want, then we have to build it ourselves. Because there's no way to force the developers to build it. In fact, with CCNF, we saw that they came in and they tried to zone their way, you know, rezone their way around some of what we wanted to do there. And, you know, as you pointed out, the developers seem to want more commercial in order to even, you know, build this light industrial. So it just, you know, again, it's very well-intentioned and I love the goals, but I just don't, I just don't think we're going to get there. And, you know, at best, as you're pointing out, we might get there in 20 years. Well, that's too long. We don't, we don't have that kind of time. I mean, you're hearing from a lot of people that, you know, we need this infrastructure now. So I don't, I mean, you know, this is obviously not in your control, but, but it does feel like we need, we need better tools here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Zandervan. Vice Mayor Allen?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. This has been a really interesting and sort of overdue conversation. So I appreciate everybody being here and doing this. I have a number of kind of jumbled thoughts that I will try to synthesize into some questions and some comments. The first thing is, I just want to say I'm sort of agnostic to the idea of light industrial use and the amount of light industrial use we have envisioned in this district. Because as several other councillors have spoken about, we had a zoning petition in front of us which used the light industrial to force a lab use, right? So they were saying to keep the two uses that we wanted as light industrial, which was a brewery and a rock club, a rock climbing, which I, you know, that's not to me what I would think of when I was thinking about low income, you know, low entry, barrier to entry jobs. And using those as a lever to build labs in this district, which nowhere in the plan, nowhere in anybody's conversation ever said, geez, you know, what we need is more labs over on, in the L-Wife District. So I just want us to be aware of some of the trade-offs we might get by sticking so closely to this light industrial idea and how much of it and what we might actually get. As several councillors have noted, you know, before me astutely that, you know, you can zone for what you want, but then you're still going to end up getting a number of developers in front of us that were going to ask for different things. I think I really want to say, I know that Ms. Faruk said that, that CDD hasn't heard a clear mandate from the council on what we want to do here. I think what we all just went through with that particular zoning petition showed us that we do need to prioritize this. And I understand it's going to be a big undertaking. But I think what you're probably hearing today from this committee, and we can certainly discuss it further at the, at the full city council to have that, that larger mandate, is that we do need a clear, we do need zoning in front of us to discuss. Otherwise, we're just going to get another developer zoning petition and that's going to be sitting in front of us and taking up all of our time. We're going to have 12 ordinance committee hearings on something that may never pass. I think we need to think about a five-year connectivity plan above and outside of what any zoning might be. Because I think we have all been talking about for so many years, a bridge here, a bridge there, an underpass here, connectivity through here. I think we should probably think about what are those connection places that we need to be thinking about to meet all of our goals of connectivity, of climate change, resilience. So some kind of plan with steps and how to get there. I also, you know, I'm curious about the easements that I know that we have along the railroad tracks. And if somebody, maybe Ms. Peters can start sharing her screen on a slide, or any of the slides really, that show the map of the district and where those easements are and where we could think about where those, those connectivity pieces are from the quadrangle to the triangle. Because I don't even think I'm really clear on where those easements are and how many there are. We just hear that they're, they exist. So that, that would be really, I think, important for us to discuss. And then in terms of the open space that has been brought up a few times, I am curious about both the opportunity for us to purchase the open space that is in the district. But also, I, I mean, I was just on, you know, real estate, looking at real estate during, when we were having this conversation about CCF and understanding that there are parcels of land available for purchase right now that we could be thinking about as a city to prioritize for a fire station or a library, a community center. So we aren't reliant on developer, on, you know, giving away larger amounts of FAR to get a library, right? I think the one thing that has frustrated me through this process in L-Wife is that we were about to give away the store to maybe get a bridge. And we have shown in the past that we can purchase open space when it's available or we can purchase property when it's available. And I want to make sure that we're doing that in this district because we aren't going to get all the things that we want here if we aren't prioritizing those purchases. So I guess my question, like I said, it was a jumble of thoughts. But one of my major questions is really, where are those easements along the railroad tracks? And how are we reaching out to property owners who are selling to do those land transfers so that we can start, you know, building what we really want to see in this district?
Through you, Chair. I, I think we would need to create, it would be easiest if we created a map of where the easements are because we would need to pull that information. I don't want to try to point that out on a map here without having the actual information. So that's something that we certainly can create and we would need, I don't think that we at CDD have the full accounting of that. We would need to consult with the law department and with DPW to make sure that we have the comprehensive list. Keep in mind that just because we have an easement doesn't mean that it necessarily will be something that is, that can be made into a connection because sometimes those easements can be pretty specific and, you know, for a specific purpose. And so it may be something that would need to then be renegotiated or they may or may not be wide enough for a connection. So, so that's, you know, we can, we can certainly dig into that, get that research and bring that forward. I'm going to try to say this carefully because in terms of acquiring open space for, I mean, acquiring land for open space and potentially other amenities. I would say that's a question perhaps best directed to the city manager. And in our conversations, I think around, principally around open space, I don't think it's, I don't think I'm saying something that he has not said before, which is that that's not something that is in our capital plan. which is that that's not something that is in our capital plan for the next few years. However, I think all of those are conversations that are appropriate to have between the council and the city manager.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I certainly didn't want to put you on the spot in the hot seat with the city manager, but I do think this is where, you know, some type of plan, whether it's a three-year connectivity plan, three-year open space or, you know, public realm requirement plan, something that comes along with this zoning, so that it doesn't feel like it's happening in a vacuum. And some kind of accounting of those easements and, you know, what they're principally purposed for could come as part of a connectivity plan, right? If we think about if that's the way we want to move forward. I don't know, I'm just, I'm really just throwing out some sort of options here, because it's, it's clear that we need a path forward. And I think this committee and certainly I think CDD and the community is interested in at least charting a path forward in an intentional way, rather than a defensive crouch and stance, which is where we have been, and I think we're all uncomfortable being there. So I'm gonna yield the floor at this time, but I, I want you to just be on the record saying, I think we should move forward with some zoning, work out the Kingston details through the ordinance committee process as we usually do. Otherwise, we're just gonna have another development zoning process in front of us, that's put in front of us by the developers and not by the city council or, or CDD. So I'm gonna yield back. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to everyone for putting this together. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Allen, I saw that Mr. Reardon has his hand up, and then Councilor Carlon.
That's through Madam Chair, Robert Reardon, a consultant of the city manager. I do want to say, one of the things I've been tasked with is to find available open space if, and talked to a number of different owners and properties. And again, the city is always on the lookout for it. But again, those opportunities are not very forthcoming. We did have the chance to purchase the BB&amp;N site earlier this year. So we are on the lookout, and if there was something available, we would certainly, you know, investigate the possibility of being able to acquire it by the city.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon. I believe there's a site, we're gonna call you, all of us, right after this meeting and encourage you to look at it, which, which Councilor Carlon referenced earlier. He might be able to give more details. Councilor Carlon? Your hand was up, but you are speaking without unmuting yourself.
I got excited. Thank you. Are we still pursuing the site that was drawn on the city's master plan? Mr. Reardon?
We are always looking for available sites, and we're, we try to make as much as, we're making as many inroads as possible on a number of sites. Not trying to be too vague, but I just, you know.
Okay, I got it, I got it. Negotiations, I got it. I would hope on zoning that you, how many acres are in the whole Alwic Quadrangle ballpark? Melissa knows ballpark. Oh. Okay, a lot. There are many acres. So you're not gonna study every part of the whole area to understand how each district is zoned. But I hope you look at one of your blocks and study it so that you're testing it and we can see what that zoning, new zoning would mean. Eric's drawing is a beautiful drawing, the drawing we saw earlier. I don't think it's directly related to the zoning. I could be wrong, and you can tell me that, but it looks like the max is six stories. And we've already heard bigger plans than that. So I, I, that's my last comment. I hope you at least take a look at one block, a typical block, and say, this is what we feel we're aiming for, so we get a sense of that. And that shouldn't take too long. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Carlon. I, I do have a couple of follow-up questions. I am really happy that all of my colleagues have asked really good, not just thoughtful comments and questions, and I hope that the city staff is getting a sense that, that they were really united with this idea that we are ready and stand poised to support you as you approach this next area of the city in a broad-thinking way to bring it into into a, the part of the city with a range of uses that are knitted together in a more comprehensive fashion than is currently on the, on the table. And to remind us all, it's, it's really the entire area. I would say for myself, you asked the question about the Alwic plan, as I've said many times, and I think you've heard pretty clearly here. I support many elements of it, but I do think, as Ms. Peters said, it is anticipated that there might be some public use, but it's really important that that be clear and that that be centered. I can fight it out with Councilor McGovern about the need for school, because I think as we look at our anticipated population, it's pretty clear that we will need some of that infrastructure as well. But certainly, community center or fire station or library. And certainly the other element of it, which is the swath of land that includes green space and the flood resiliency plan. There's a pond in that for a reason, which is to ensure that this area of the city, just like on the other side of Alwic near Jerry's Pond that's being developed, that it actually is built with the expectation that it is in a floodplain that used to be a swamp, that needs desperately to ensure that we have the water retention infrastructure, not just huge buckets basically underneath buildings, but that the infrastructure has it. So I, I hope, if, if you want the message from me, I support the plan as long as it does include the, the attention to those public spaces. Because the climate mitigation is just as important as planning for a school, a library, a community center. I wondered, is there a, can any of you, as we think about this connectivity in many of the plans over the years, there has been a bridge, there's an underpass. Is there a better way than an underpass to connect that whole section on the east side of, of the parkways from Ringe Towers and Jefferson Park and that half of North Cambridge, really closely to the Tobin Vessel Lane School, to the high school, to others? And, and on, basically knit those large green spaces together? Has that been talked about and addressed at all, or is it, is, is it just something that has started to be discussed? And for my colleagues who have not had a chance, I'm, I know Assistant City Manager Faruk has looked at it. And Noah from Justice Start referenced it, and I know Mr. Johnson from the Cambridge Housing Authority. There's actually a report on connectivity done for the Cambridge Redevelopment Authority specifically around Ringe. So if you haven't had a chance to look at it, that, that's where my thinking is coming from on this, that that clearly has gotten some attention lately. And I'm curious as to where we're at in that process.
Thank you, Chair. So that work was, was done principally starting from the Justice Start project on, on Ringe Ave, on Ringe, at Ringe Commons, where they were looking, it started off with that site and then expanded a little bit. Can't say that anybody has gotten to the level of detail to, to determine what is, what would be a preferable approach, whether whether an underpass or a, an overbridge would be the better approach. I think that's the level of detail that would require a, a lot more sort of detailed, detailed design to figure out what's workable. Because I think as we've talked about underpasses, you know, you've asked about the Yerkes Underpass. You know, things like the access to the site are incredibly important. And there are, you know, at, at Yerkes, there was pre-existing, because the road went all the way. It was, it, it created an easier framework than exists, exists here. Because all, all along is is, you know, I shouldn't say privately owned, but it's, it's properties that are developed, affordable housing for the most part. And so those are parcels that are being used, that it's not public right-of-way. So it's a little bit more complicated to think of either of those, those kinds of interventions, because you're having them to rely on those projects to essentially provide access. And that's, Chad, I'm, I'm close enough to affordable housing development and funding for it to, to know how incredibly challenging that can be to, to then think of trying to carve out part of the site for, for connectivity, not to say that that's not a good and worthwhile goal from a broader perspective. But it's, it's also not straightforward in this instance, either of the two solutions.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And as I said, this is the be, the, not the beginning of the discussion, but as we heard earlier, two students sent us a letter saying how wonderful it would be to connect, and not, and then some of, we heard from some of Justice Start, and I know that the, the mayor had indicated to me earlier today that as she looked at that report, she thought it was, was something we should be considering. And having grown up there, that it would be a nice connection to be made. It would, of course, only ever be made in conjunction with the residents and the owners to ensure that it was, if it was ever done, it would have to be done. Obviously, in a way that made people feel that it was a net benefit and something positive. We just have a few minutes left, and Councilor McGovern has his hand up, so I will go to him and then we can close out in a minute or two.
I just want to, you know, during the course of this meeting, we did receive an email from Mike Johnston about the underpass and, and specifically about some concerns that he has about that. So I just want to make sure that, he couldn't be here, but I want to make sure people know that. And, and as we discuss this moving forward, we're gonna want to make sure we don't have any adverse effects on the development of affordable housing.
Right. Yeah, no, he had indicated it, he certainly wouldn't pay for it when I talked with him, you know, a month ago, or and making sure that if we did anything, it would have to fit in line with the existing plans that they have. They have reserved some space for, I think, a multi-modal path along the railroad tracks. So obviously, this would all have to be worked out, and yet now would be the time to do it, when given the explosion of interest in that area. I, I think the next steps are for any of us to, I think, communicate with CDD about, about this plan, and perhaps for the council as a whole. If, if you feel like Director, Assistant City Manager Faruk, that you need more specifics from us on what it is that we're endorsing. Where I, I think we can provide that, whether it's through a policy order or something coming out of this committee. Make sure that we know what you need, because what we're hearing, I think, back from you is you need to know that we want this to happen and that we are endorsing the plan and that you might. I also heard that there's definite interest in this, and yet there's some question about what the balance is really. From, as we heard earlier, part of it is, we don't, my understanding is, we don't distinguish, we don't have a separate category in our zoning for labs. Right? It's just light industrial or manufacturing or office. But that may be part of it, that, that, do we want light industrial, which was a real push for the basis of entry-level jobs as opposed to labs, which sometimes don't have those entry-level jobs? But it sounds like you need a little more specificity from us around that balance. But other than that, you've heard loud and clear that you will be moving forward with some proposal for zoning. With the caveat, as Councilor McGovern said, that while the city would have a little less leeway if we bring together all the zoning, on the other hand, we would control it in a way that would be quite helpful if we could move forward. So I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, Assistant City Manager Faruk?
No, thank you, thank you, Chair. I, I think it's always in, in this sort of scenario beneficial for us to, to receive from the council, a council order asking us to embark on translating this plan into zoning. That would be helpful.
Okay. I, since we're supposed to end at four, I'm not sure we could whip it off right now, although I bet someone on this call. Vice Mayor is so good at putting those together, but I think we'll work on it after this, after this meeting. And it, it's certainly been a rich discussion and helped me understand, I think, how my colleagues think about it, and also how the city thinks about and the kinds of things that we need to move forward. I'm pretty excited, because this is a plan that we've talked about a few times, and now let's move forward and, and make it into reality. Because otherwise, that, that area will, will move forward. It will be developed, and the question is how much we can shape it. With that, it's four o'clock. Do we need a, a motion to adjourn, or do we just automatically expire, Deputy Clark? All right?
No, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
On the motion of Vice Mayor Allen to adjourn, Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor Carlon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Councilor McGovern?
Yes.
Councilor Zandervan?
Yes.